All right, good evening. I'd like to call the Hicksville Exempted Village Board of Education meeting to order.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Mrs. Carrier?
Here.
Mrs. Jones? Mrs. Mazur?
Here.
Mr. Methman?
Here.
And Mr. Vedder?
Here.
Okay, pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
No visitors to welcome. How you doing? Thanks for coming. Principal reports.
All right, I'll go first. Our master schedules finally finalized in Power School for the 22-23 school year. We're excited about some of the opportunities we offer for the middle school kids this year. Some of those would be Mr. Farrell has taken on two of our electives and revamped them to better suit the needs of our students. He's offering a sixth grade enrichment class and an eighth grade seminar course. The students and his electives will get the opportunity to learn in a hands-on approach as Mr. Farrell supplements the previous curriculum with hands-on problem-based projects that parallel the content being taught in the students' core classes. Another elective that's being revamped is Mrs. Vosel will be teaching a seventh and eighth grade forensic science class. This class will relate to the science to law, and the students will spend time learning about evidence, fingerprinting, blood types, and handwriting analysis. The class is a very popular class and was offered in those schools a couple of years ago. And then finally, Mrs. Tier will be integrating into the seventh grade rotations a financial literacy class. Mrs. Tier is excited to use her skills to help give the seventh grade students a strong foundation of finances prior to their sophomore year when they take financial management. Last, our test results have come out for ELA on June 20th. Even though these are just preliminary results, our ELA scores are 15% to 35% higher than the state average. We're currently diving into our data from math, science, and ELA to locate and celebrate our successes as well as pinpoint specific areas for improvement.
Thank you.
We've got all kinds of technology issues over here.
On June 13th, the title funds were placed into the CCIP, so fortunately, this year's funds really mirrored last year's funds, so we didn't take a hit financially. So currently, we have two title teachers returning, and we'll be hiring a new title teacher for this upcoming year. Just been working on finalizing the title one and specialized schedules, as well as making some corrections to our nomination from the safety ribbon board that was just set back in last Thursday. Our preliminary ELA scores came back as well, and we are currently 20% higher than the state.
Can I go?
Okay, so first off, as we know, finished the school year. Congratulations to our staff. I will say this as the high school principal, my nine years, I felt like this was one of our more challenging years. I appreciated everyone volunteering their time and effort with commencement, with the high school staff and middle school staff. In fact, Erin Montgomery, the guidance counselor for elementary school, she volunteered this time, and she assisted us also. So again, those big events that represent our district do not happen just based on, you know, my efforts and Mrs. Wellings' efforts, but it's everyone chipping in and helping out with that, so I do appreciate everyone. On Sunday, May 29th, of course, as you know, we did have our commencement for the class of 2022. We had 58 seniors graduate from Hicksville High School. Of course, you know, congratulations to all of them and their families, and we look forward to seeing what they do after high school as they pursue their future goals. Summer sports practices and camps are well underway. If you're at the school or around the school, it just seems like this parking lot is full every day. Between weightlifting, the mini camps, the middle school and high school camps, we're hosting girls' basketball for the summer. So again, I appreciate Eric Bassett's staff working with our coaches and our athletic directors team in making sure that the facilities are great, ready to go, and of course, just , you know, those smooth transitions between each group. Last month, of course, these two hit on it, we discussed the end-of-course scores, which are not public knowledge yet, but from the high school side of things, I just want to state the same thing. I mean, it seems like we're anywhere from 20% to almost 47% higher in some testing areas. I believe our Algebra I score has more than doubled the state average. Our geometry score is close to double the state average, and then as you move into some of the other tests, we, you know, far exceeded what the state expects. So again, when that information is compared to the schools that are, you know, in the four county area with the help of the ESC, I know Mr. Andy Hunter, he typically throws together a really nice spreadsheet comparing all the districts. Again, that's just one piece of the pie. We don't want to focus strictly on those test scores, but I will say that we're pretty proud of our students and our staff here at Hicksville. Reminder to all students, families, and community members, we highly recommend you call the high school office and middle school office and, of course, the elementary school office before you come in. We're a skeleton crew in the summer. I know there's a lot going on here at the school and a lot of requests from our community members. We just, again, give us a call, we'll make sure we're here. If we have to schedule an appointment or come in, we will do that. I just don't want people coming and going and saying we're not available. Again, just please give us a call. And of course, you know, future events, it's hard to believe this, but, you know, we're almost to July already, and in about, what, four weeks, we'll start our fall sports practices. We'll have kids in here for football and the other events from the last week of July moving forward. So it is, it's like it never stops. You know, try to take the time to rejuvenate, enjoy your family vacations, and again, prepare for the next school year. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. Any four county reports? Keith, superintendent's report?
Yes. The majority of the end of the year stuff is pretty much completed that I have to do each year. There's a couple of reports that take a few days each to get them finished. One of them is the safety grant that safety operations plan, sorry, that you guys have to be approving later tonight. Once we approve that, then I need to get all of the necessary signatures and get that submitted to the state. It's a yearly thing that we have to do. There really were no changes from last year other than, like, enrollment numbers and items like that. The bus and van driver physicals are all completed for next year, and the bus driver training is scheduled for the first of August, the first day of August, August 1. And then our new teacher orientation is also scheduled for August 1, so we'll be working with some of those people that have to be in both places that are be, that will be presenting to our new employees. I'll just adjust those schedules so that they can do both. We do have quite a few people, too, that get VAN certified. That certification only takes two hours, but we hold that right here in-house, so it'd be pretty convenient for them to get from there to where I need them then with new employee orientation. All new employees needed have been hired or will be hired as of tonight, with the one exception is we'll have to hire a new music teacher now since Ms. Rodish resigned last week, the end of the week. We will certainly miss her. She did a great job. She's accepted a position closer to home, to her family, and so I certainly understand that. I've also started the process of filtering through all the photo photos from the past year to be able to replace all of the student pictures on the walls throughout the building. That was a big job, and a big job in thanks to also Eric and John, who take all the frames down and replace them all each year, so I appreciate that very much. I did receive a notification just, I forgot if it was today or last, in the last Friday, I think it was maybe, but the Safe Routes to Schools grant that we applied for in conjunction with the community, we did not receive. So we'll try that again next year, the year after, whenever that's offered again, but we did not receive that grant this year. And that's all I have.
Just a quick question.
Yeah.
Do we know where we are on the sign for the eighth thing to reduce the speed for school entrance?
You know, I think about that, Jen, every time I pull out. I'll make a note of that to check with the state, because we followed through on that, and they said that they would get it, but, you know, how the...
Right.
I think it's one speed. No pun intended, so I'll check on that, yeah. You're talking about the fly sheet like we have out here. Yeah, absolutely.
Thanks, Keith. Okay, I need a motion to review minutes and financials.
I'll move.
It's a tie.
You can take one of us for a second.
All right. Thanks, Steph. Thanks, Jen. Minutes from the regular board meeting on May 23rd, 2022, and special meetings on May 31, 2022, and June 13, 2022. Treasurers consent agenda items. Cash reconciliation as of May 31, 2022. Financial statements from May 2022. Amended certificate of estimated resources for fiscal year 2022 as presented. Total general fund resources of $15,686,603.60. And total resources for all funds of $21,866,114.78. Amended fiscal year 2022 permanent appropriations as presented. Total general fund appropriations of $12,250,128.46. And total appropriations for all funds of $16,503,697.18. Fiscal year 2023 temporary appropriations as presented. Total general funds appropriations of $6,750,000. And total appropriations of all funds of $8,295,625.67. Authorize the treasurer to enter into a contract with the Ohio School Plan for insurance coverage, property liability, auto, cyber, violence, and pollution for the policy year July 1, 2022 to July 1, 2023 at a premium cost of $52,644. Approve the transfer of $50,000 from the General Fund 001-0000 to the General Fund Bus Fund Establishment of the following fund: 200-9726, class of 2026 freshman. Participation of the following federal and state funding projects for fiscal year 2022. Establish accounts and appropriate funds as indicated below. The following petty cash and change funds account for fiscal year 2023. Cafe $60, elementary $50, middle school $50, athletics $1,500, athletic checking $2,500, elementary school $125, middle school $125, high school $125, treasurer $500. Accept the following donations: $100 from Iker Family for art show, $106.81 from Hicksville PTO for grade six luncheon, $5,452.50 from Hicksville School Foundation for velocity Roll call.
Hi. How about some commentary?
Well, I want to just add something real briefly here, I think. The insurance, same company that the district's been with, the Ohio School Plan, and Highland is the underwriter for many years. There is about a 17% increase in premiums this year. Some of that, though, is, a lot of that has to do with the new building. They did not charge us at all for the addition, which was what we entered into like August 1st. I think the company basically doesn't update additions like that, like if you get new buses and so forth, they'll cover you, but they don't update as far as the premium until the next year. So with addition of the athletic academic facility, along with inflationary pressures, and also one, another third thing that affected our insurance is cyber. Cybersecurity is becoming a big thing, as the bad people are out there making life tough for all of us out here. However, the Ohio School Plan did a survey, essentially a survey to their members, and it was pretty intensive, I thought, six, eight pages of questions. Some of them I was able to answer, but a lot of them had to go through Jeff Schaefer, having to do with our technology and our safeguards in place and so forth. So I had heard from other people that they were having troubles getting cyber. Our company said we look pretty strong. They liked where we are, but the Ohio School Plan's cyber itself is not very robust at all, so, which was only like $700. I have selected to, in this cost, one that's about $3,300, and it is much more robust, and I feel comfortable if we did have something happen that we could get our costs pretty well taken care of, hopefully. So, but I didn't want to not have that plan just in case we became a victim. So it's up quite a bit, like I said, 17%, but we also have a lot more coverage, inflation, cyber, et cetera. That's all I have unless, pretty much standard otherwise, unless you have questions.
Well, thanks for taking, taking the initiative to look at that in more detail. That's always, we're always appreciative of that.
You're welcome.
Okay. Roll call. Mrs. Mazur? Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
Mr. Methman?
Yes.
Motion carries four with one absent. Need a motion for employment and certified staff.
I'll move.
Thank you, Eric. Thank you, Jen. Recommend issuing a one-year limited contract to Paula Overmeyer as classroom teacher with 12 years' experience at a master's degree for the 2022-2023 school year. This will be for 30% of a workday and shall be for the position of co-athletic director. Recommend issuing a one-year limited contract to Brittany Carpenter as social worker with 10 years' experience at a master's degree for the 2022-2023 school year. Recommend issuing a one-year limited contract to Jennifer Cunningham as classroom teacher with 10 years' experience at a bachelor's degree, 150 hours, for the 2022-2023 school year. Recommend to approve the following supplemental contracts for extended days during the 2022-2023 school year to be served before and after the scheduled school year. Robin Chamberlain, 10 days; Jeff Haught, 10 days; Matt Hoffman, 25 days; Zach Kolmeyer, 10 days, band camp; Erin Montgomery, 5 days; Paula Overmeyer, 10 days; Jeff Schaefer, 35 days; Kelly Van Horn, 10 days; Amanda Wyman, 12 days. Recommend to approve the following supplemental contracts for the 2022-2023 school year. Robin Chamberlain, district mentor; Emily Finzer, Hicksville Initiative House Leader; Chris Gehagen, Hicksville Initiative House Leader; Joy Geiger, Hicksville Initiative House Leader; Joy Geiger, foreign language advisor; Joy Geiger, co-coordination advisor; Elaine Gurkin, National Honor Society Club Advisor; Elaine Gurkin, drama club advisor; Elaine Gurkin, high school music director; Jeff Haught, co-athletic director; Jeff Haught, LPDC committee member; Matt Hoffman, LPDC committee member; A.J. Clausen, Student Council Middle School; Zach Kolmeyer, extra band, pep band for the winter; Kathy Laney, academic team advisor; Kathy Laney, high school yearbook advisor; Kathy Laney, newspaper advisor; Kathy Laney, science fair advisor; Missy Lee, district mentor; Ryan Meiser, breakfast coverage; Erin Montgomery, elementary school council advisor; Paula Overmeyer, co-athletic director; Liz Perna, senior class advisor; Emily Reese, co-science club advisor; Lisa Savage, district mentor; Joy Stevenson, Hicksville Initiative House Leader; Beth Stuckey, LPDC committee member; Beth Stuckey, sophomore class advisor; Brent Souffol, LPDC committee member; Heather Taylor, district mentor; Mindy Trzynka, district mentor; Amber Zakrich, co-coordination advisor; Natalie Zakrich, co-science club advisor; Natalie Zakrich, archery advisor. Recommend to approve all middle school, high school certified staff as Friday School teachers for the 2022-2023 school year. Recommend to approve all middle school, high school certified staff as pride teachers for the 2022-2023 school year. Recommend to approve all middle school, high school certified staff as zero-hour teachers for the 2022-2023 school year. Recommend to approve all certified staff in grades K through 4 for after-school intervention at a rate of 30.78 per hour for the 2022-2023 school year to be funded through federal Title I-A grant funds or general fund. Recommend to accept the resignation from Emily Rodish as classroom instructor at the conclusion of the 2021-2022 school year. Any commentary or questions? Discussion. Okay. Roll call. Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
And Mr. Methman?
Yes.
Motion carries four and four to zero with one absent. Need another motion, please. Thanks, Steph.
I'll second. Go ahead. I'll second.
Thanks, Eric. Recommend issuing a five-year contract to Kristin Kaufman as elementary school K through 4 principal commencing August 1, 2022 and ending August 31, 2027. Roll call, please. Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Methman?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero with one absent. Another motion, please.
I'll move.
Thanks. Jen and Steph. Recommend issuing a three-year contract to S. Elizabeth Perna as school psychologist commencing August 1, 2022 and ending July 31, 2025. Roll call, please. Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
Mr. Methman?
Yes.
Motion passes four to nothing with one absent. Need a motion for employment of classified staff, please.
I'll move.
Thanks, Eric.
I'll second.
Thanks, Jen. Recommend to approve the following supplemental contracts for the 2022-2023 school year. Ashley Baum, flag instructor; Tanya Idon, co-junior class advisor; Tanya Idon, co-prom advisor; Jamie Parker, co-junior class advisor; Jamie Parker, co-prom advisor; Pam Slattery, elementary yearbook advisor; Riley Whitty, cheerleading advisor, grades 9 through 12. Roll call. Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
And Mr. Methman?
Yes.
So is Riley Whitty taking the full-time cheerleading coach position, so she's handling all of that?
She's going to be the new, we had Nikki Miller, of course, who did a great job in the last couple of years, along with this early, and then moved to junior high coach the last few years, and so she moved up to that coach, I believe. Megan Cobre's on there, co-assisted coach, and there's a whole search for a junior high coach.
Well, that's good that she's familiar and can get stuff started. I know they do a lot in the summer, so...
And Megan Cobre, she used to be a high school coach, but it's been about eight or 10 years. She would like to get back to the class, and she has some experience to help Riley.
Okay, I need a motion for services and agreements.
I'll move.
Thanks, Jen. Thanks, Steph. Recommend to approve a service agreement with Northwest Ohio Juvenile Detention Training and Rehabilitation Center from July 1, 2022 through June 30, 2023. Amount of service is $77 per student per week, per weekday, for students assigned to NWOJDT NRC. Recommend to approve a service agreement with Northwest Ohio Virtual Academy for licenses and other instructional materials for the 2022-2023 school year. Roll call, please. Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
And Mr. Methman?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero, one absent. Need a motion for other business, please.
I'll second.
Thanks, Steph. Thanks, Eric. Recommend to authorize the superintendent to grant approval for teams involved in overnight state tournaments for fall, winter, and spring sporting events. Recommend to approve the following student fees for the 2022-2023 school year. Preschool $50, grades K through 12, $60. Recommend to approve participation in the National School Breakfast Lunch Program and the Title I and Title II A programs for the 2022-2023 school year. Recommend to approve the certification of standards governing types of food and beverages sold on school premises. Report from the Ohio Department of Education for the 2022-2023 school year. Recommend to approve the middle school, high school athletic code handbook for the 2022-2023 school year. Recommend to approve the drug testing policy for the 2022-2023 school year. This policy applies to all students in grades 9 through 12. Recommend to approve the athletic ticket prices for the 2022-2023 school year. Recommend to approve the elementary school student handbook for the 2022-2023 school year. Recommend to approve the revised administrator salary schedule. Recommend to approve the classified salary schedule from July 1, 2022 to June 30, 2025. Recommend to approve the safety operations plan for the school district. Have any discussion about any of those items?
Are we leaving the athletic code on, or are we taking it off?
I thought we were taking it off, too.
Maybe that was in that third, take three.
Well, I'm on take three, and I thought the message said take off. It could have. So are we agreeing that we're removing that?
Yeah, we, I think we should, before we go any further.
So you're referring to the school athletic code handbook?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Did you want, excuse me, did you want to possibly remove the drug testing and athletic prices, too, since those may be involved?
The drug hasn't, like, hasn't changed. It's already in there. If you're going to review that, and the ticket prices from last year to this year remain the same, then separate from the handbook, anyway. That's a GMC constitution piece that we just have to abide by, so...
Fair enough, yep. Good question.
Yeah, good point, though. Think, there was an earlier comment that I made that I didn't know that it was a GMC piece until I delved into it a little bit further, so... Okay, so are we good with all those items? Okay, so are we good with all those items?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Striking the middle school, high school athletic code handbook from those items. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
And Mr. Methbin?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero with one absent.
So just a reminder to people out there that you now have to pay for your breakfast and lunch, so note to parents who didn't sign up for the title.
And I know there have been a couple blasts that have come out
Yes.
through the mass messaging system. Probably wouldn't be a bad idea to do a couple more before school starts. Okay, need a motion, please. Thanks, Jen. Recommend to approve notice that Hicksville Exempted Village Schools will offer a public meeting to provide the opportunity for the public to comment on the district's use of IDEA Part B funds with recommendations or suggestions for special education programs and services. Liz Perna, school psychologist, and Kristin Kaufman, elementary school principal, Kirsten Kaufman, pardon me, elementary school principal, will be available for this meeting on Wednesday, September 14, 2022, at 3:00 p.m. at Hicksville Elementary School in the elementary office conference room or by appointment at a later time. Is there any commentary or?
Just a statement.
Okay. All right. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
And Mr. Methbin?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero with one absent. Any old business that needs to be covered? Discussion?
Just a couple reminders that the August 18 board meeting, Mike and I talked a little bit about that, and that'll be a very short meeting. The main part of it is that we have to have that meeting on that date, July 18, which is.
July 18. You said July 18.
You said August 18.
Okay, sorry. July 18.
All right, I just wanted to make sure I wrote it down.
July 18, there is a board meeting, and that is that it'll start prior to our regular board meeting, which is the one where we have a public meeting if anybody wants to address the rehire of Sandy Brown, remember? There will be most likely a regular board meeting immediately following that, that it'll be very light, hopefully to approve like a music teacher, for example, and anything that can't wait till August. Then typically what I try to do is not have that July meeting, but have to this year. So then we move, we have June's a little bit later, don't have one in July typically, and then we have August a little bit earlier. So was looking at possibly dates for that August meeting. If you want to take a look at your calendars and see.
So are you thinking earlier than the 15th? Because it's kind of weird because August 1st is.
Yeah, it is. I mean, I think the 15th will work as of now. I don't see any reason why it won't. I mean, it's closer to that date. We'll just leave it at the 15th if that's okay. It won't mess anybody up that way. If I need to change it and move it forward, though, then we, of course, I'll get in touch with you and the media as well. Let's just leave it at the 15th, I think, because if we can get that music teacher hired on the 18th.
And I will not be here on the 18th.
I won't be here on the 18th either.
I will be.
Mike will.
Okay, all right. We'll have a quorum. Okay, so we're, for now, we're leaving the August meeting on the 15th.
I think that's fine, yes. You guys are okay with that. I think we are, aren't we, Mike?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Lovely.
And then I just want to give a special welcome to the two people sitting over here. Of course, you approved Aaron Highlander last month. He's our new middle school principal, and I asked him to come tonight so he had the opportunity to meet all of you. And also Jen Cunningham will be replacing Mrs. Turnbull, and we want to be welcoming her and both of them actually as our new aces, so welcome.
Awesome. Welcome aboard.
Yeah.
Okay, so no unannounced guests?
Yeah, this is.
Do, is there a need for executive session?
I don't have anything unless Mike do.
No, I do not.
I know, this is a little bit remarkable.
I know. I don't know how to do this. I don't know how to function. Okay, so need a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Thank you, Steph. Thank you, Jen. And just to be clear, the next meeting we'll have will be on July 18. And we'll start that meeting early.
You'll start regular time.
Regular time?
Just start at the regular time.
July 18.
And then the regular board meeting right afterward.
5:30. All right, very good. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
And Mr. Methbin?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero with one absent. Thank you. That's all, sir.